I call this meeting of the Onslow County Board of Education to order. Thank you for coming out in this little wet weather that we're having and it's a pleasure to see all of you here. Our first thing that we're going to do this evening is invite Reverend Christopher Phillips from the River of Life Church to our podium and he will be delivering our invocation. Thank you for coming Reverend.
You're welcome. I'm gonna do it from here if that's alright.
That's fine.
And I'd like to ask you to join with me in prayer. Father, we thank you for Onslow County schools. We thank you for the leadership. We pray for each one and ask you to bless the school board, bless the administration. Lord, we pray that the manifestation of your grace and favor would be obvious on our students and on our teachers. Lord, we thank you for blessing our schools and surrounding them so that they'll be kept safe. Lord, we pray that you would bless the business that will be conducted tonight, in Jesus' mighty name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Will you rise and face the flag and join us in pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Can you see that before you? I'd ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
I'd like such a motion. Second.
Motion of second in discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Next is the approval of six items which are under the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve it?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Thank you. Next is the good news spotlight which is an avenue of recognition for many people that are in our school system. We really are delighted to do that. So without any further ado, I will recognize Dr. Pill who will be coming forward and she has some special recognitions.
Thank you Madam Chair. It is such an honor always to be here to present and recognize excellence in arts education in Onslow County schools. Again, my name is Lisa Pill. I'm the Director of Cultural Arts and Special Projects in our school district. Good evening Madam Chair, members of our board, Dr. Collins', executive staff, and our audience this evening. We would like to begin our good news by recognizing and congratulating the following students and their teachers on their selection to be a part of the 2019 North Carolina Honors Ensemble. This is quite an achievement and honor. It reflects hard work and dedication and commitment to your music studies over many years for some, as we have some seniors here tonight. These students worked hard with their teachers, guiding them to learn a specific musical selection which was an audition piece, and they worked to build their music skills which allowed them to compete against hundreds of other students from all over the state to earn a seat in a North Carolina Honors Ensemble. If I recall from the elementary honors chorus, I believe there were 600-plus students that auditioned and there were 202 that made it. Yeah, it was pretty, quite awesome. Once selected, students worked to learn a variety of musical selections and attended the 2019 NCMEA Professional Development Conference on November 9th through 12th in Winston-Salem just this past weekend. Many of us just got back today. At the conference, students worked with renowned musicians from all over the country and they gave a final performance with their respective honors ensembles at the selected venue in downtown Winston-Salem. And I was very honored to attend those performances and they were wonderful. It was very wonderful. So when I call your name, I would like you to come up and be recognized. I would also like to invite their teachers and administrators to come up as well. Mr. Anderson is gonna help by presenting the certificates. And when you do come up, please stay because we're gonna get a great picture of everyone. So we'll begin by recognizing students who were selected to be a part of the North Carolina Elementary Honors Chorus. From Carolina Forest, Kiara Oguno, 4th grader. Her teacher is Ms. Mary Ludwig and Principal Ms. Urban. From Dixon Middle, Ada Stebbins. Music teacher, Joy Schreckengost. Principal, Lee Bazell. From Queens Creek Elementary, Adeline Taylor, 4th grader. Her teacher, Dr. Zada Bazey. And Principal Elaine Justice. From Sandridge Elementary, Leila Hodges, 5th grader. Liliana Whited, 5th grader. Megan Massey, the music teacher, and Denise Gardner, principal. And I see Mr. Henderson is here tonight, Assistant Principal. From Stateside Elementary, Rain Munoz, 5th grader. Ms. Janay Copeland, music teacher, and Principal Kristy Bracy. And from Swansboro Elementary, and I'm gonna add a special and we'll get off the script for a minute. So we had two students who have made the North Carolina Elementary Honors Chorus for two years in a row, so I would highlight them first. From Swansboro Elementary, Kennedy Bennett, 5th grader. And Emma Sanders, 5th grader. So they made it two years in a row. Madelyn Yates, 5th grader. Lindsay Williams, music teacher, and Ms. Paige Highsmith, the principal. And we're not done. I have three pages of good news for everyone tonight. I will say Onslow County schools was represented well this weekend and I have goosebumps about that. Was so proud to be a part of such amazing events and see our students and our Onslow County educators a part of that. So next, we'd like to recognize our high school students who were selected to perform in the North Carolina High School Honors Chorus and the North Carolina Honors Orchestra. First, please congratulate Elijah Meyer, a 10th grader from Jacksonville High School. Elijah participated in the North Carolina High School Honors Chorus. His teacher is Ms. Tamara Sutton. She was not able to be here tonight. And Principal Ms. Maria Johnson. Now I would like to ask for Tyler Reese and Jeffrey Sandlin, their teachers and administrators, to join me at the podium from Richlands and Jacksonville. Tyler Reese is a senior at Jacksonville High School. His teacher is Jolie Brooks and Principal Maria Johnson. And Jeffrey Sandlin is a senior at Richlands High. His teacher is Mr. Greg Schreckengost and Principal Brad Staley. And I would also like to highlight that Jeffrey has been a part of the Honors Orchestra for two years as well. So let's give a big warm round of applause for all of these students and teachers.
Can we scoot in tight?
Sure. I'd like to go see the next chair. Thank you everyone. One more round of applause.
You may have a seat.
We don't have enough room for everybody up here the whole night. So next, it's such an honor to recognize and celebrate these two educators tonight for their special awards. So Madam Chair, we have two additional performing arts recognitions this evening. Both are Onslow County staff who have gone above and beyond in their support of performing arts. So first, I would like to ask Jolie Brooks to come back up to the podium and join me. Tonight, we are very excited to share that Ms. Jolie Brooks has been awarded the North Carolina Music Educators Orchestra Lifetime Achievement Award. I keep getting off the script, sorry. Just so proud. And I was able to see her get that award on Sunday, which was quite an honor. This award recognizes teachers who have dedicated 20 or more years of active service to teaching orchestra in the state of North Carolina. Nominations were reviewed by the NCMEA Orchestra Executive Board and she received her award at the conference this past weekend. Ms. Brooks was recognized for the work that she has done beyond her day job. The Chair of the Selection Committee said all of your work with Eastern Regional Orchestra, the Event Chair for North Carolina Honors Orchestra, service as Orchestra Section Chairperson, presentations at NCMEA Professional Development Conferences played a role in your selection. And because of her demonstrated dedication, the Chair added, "In fact, it was a slam dunk decision." So congratulations on this recognition and for your dedication to the performing arts of students in Onslow County and across the state. Congratulations again.
So we'll just ask you to stay by the p- okay.
And next, I have the honor of asking Mr. Earl Taylor to come join us at the podium. And I'll tell ya, I wrote Mr. Taylor's nomination letter and I had to fit it all in four pages. And I sought out information from the past 45 years of his career in arts education. And I worked very diligently to fit that in four pages, but it was extremely difficult to do because of the things that he has done to support and advocate for arts education. So this time, I would like to say that Mr. Taylor, most of you know that he was a band director when he first started in this journey of education. He has served as a district administrator and he now is an elected board member for Onslow County schools. But tonight, we are pleased to announce that Mr. Earl Taylor is the recipient of the 2019 North Carolina Music Educators Association Music Education Advocate Award. And again, I was very honored to be there last night with him and his family and all of the arts teachers from Onslow County schools to support Mr. Taylor as he received that award and recognition. The NCMEA Music Education Advocate Award recognizes a person who has demonstrated, a lifetime, of exceptional visible support and advocacy for music and the arts in North Carolina. The award demonstrates visible success in improving the general status of arts in North Carolina, leadership in the arts, and effective advocacy for music education and the other arts. Mr. Taylor received his award last night and congratulations again, Mr. Taylor. We appreciate everything that you've done to make arts education alive and well in Onslow County schools and in our state.
Do we have a picture moment? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Folger, you have the honor of recognizing the Assistant Principal and Principal of the Year. Aren't you lucky?
Of course I am. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins', executive staff, audience. Again, very excited tonight to talk to you about our Assistant Principal of the Year and recognize him again for two awards actually tonight. So I would ask for Southwest High School Assistant Principal, Mr. Karuthis, and his family to join me at the podium as well as his Principal, Commissioner Foster, to please join us at the podium. I don't know, do you say Principal Foster, Mr. Foster, Commissioner Foster? I don't know.
Normally he answers to hey you.
Hey you, hey you. So Mr. Karuthis has been an Assistant Principal for three years, all of which have been at Southwest High School. On September the 26th, Mr. Karuthis had quite a surprise when he was visited by Dr. Collins', school and district staff, the Southwest High School marching band, his family, and other special guests as he was named the 2019-20 Onslow County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year. Mr. Karuthis received many positive letters supporting his selection and among one of them was one from Southwest High School teacher Julie Pollak who said, quote, "Mr. Karuthis is the type of Assistant Principal every teacher hopes to work for and needs as a mentor and leader. He is flexible, calm under pressure, and very proficient in his actions and strong in his character." Mr. Karuthis went on to represent Onslow County schools in the Regional Assistant Principal and State Principal of the Year competition. So on September the 26th, we were recognizing him as Onslow County Schools Assistant Principal of the Year and then guess what? We got to go back on October the 25th to visit Mr. Karuthis again as he was recognized as the 2020 North Carolina Secondary Assistant Principal of the Year by the North Carolina Principals and Assistant Principals Association. It was wonderful to be there. Southwest organized a surprise pep rally and to deliver the exciting news. We were all out in the stadium. They tricked Mr. Karuthis into thinking that there was a bomb threat, so he got in the back of the police car, sped around to the football track, and there was everybody congratulating for Assistant Principal of the Year for North Carolina. He will now serve as North Carolina's representative for the National Association of Secondary School Principals of the Year program and will be, which recognizes middle and high school Assistant Principals who demonstrated such success. Then he will compete at the NASSP Assistant Principal of the Year, the winner of which will be announced next summer in National Harbor, Maryland at their conference. So let's wish Mr. Karuthis great luck and hope and for all of his talent here. Mr. Karuthis, we hope that you're now gonna be named the National Assistant Principal of the Year. No pressure, no pressure. But let's please congratulate both our Gonzalo and our state Assistant Principal. Thank you Madam Chair. I believe Dr. Krenick's gonna do the Principal of the Year.
Thank you. I'd like to ask Deborah Hoffman to join me at the podium, Principal of Jacksonville Commons Elementary School. And Deborah, I think has her husband, Terrence, come on up. They brought their family. You can have your family too, Deb. And I'm gonna ask also Donna Chadwick to join us. I have a few things to say about Ms. Chadwick too. Oh, and who is this? Oh, oh, come on down. Come on down. The whole family's here. Awesome, great. Deborah Hoffman has been named our Onslow County Schools Wells Fargo Principal of the Year for the 2020 competition and we are very excited for her. She's very excited. Everybody was excited. For those of you who could be there on October 9th when we surprised her also at her school, it definitely was a celebration. We actually got to listen to the song celebration over and over again. Mr. Anderson liked it so much, we couldn't hardly get him to leave. We had music, we had, her staff members were just over the moon. And we did, we had a crown and we had a parade throughout the school and the teachers brought all the kids out of their classroom and lined the halls. It was a really nice, really nice event. Ms. Hoffman has been an administrator in Onslow County schools for nine years and she's been the principal at JCE for the last four. And everyone who wrote nomination letters for her, which there were many, there's too many to count, remarked about her, her great ability to impact and improve the culture at JCE. Donna Chadwick is the Assistant Principal there and she wrote a great nomination for Ms. Hoffman and she talked about how Ms. Hoffman has encouraged the staff to grow and pushes success through the Avid program and that she has done just an outstanding job with building relationships in the community. That was evident. There were many parent supporters of Ms. Hoffman and the PTO president was there and wrote part of the nomination. And she's really made it her mission to help provide resources in the community for the students at JCE who are living in poverty. And so it was pretty, it was a remarkable nomination package, I have to tell you. And my girl Donna, she's remarkable too. I called her up and said, okay, we have to have a celebration and it has to be good and there has to be, there has to be music because Dr. Folger has bands at all of her celebrations. And Donna said, "We don't have a band here." I said, "I know, what do we have?" And so the chorus group got together, some choral music, because I said, "It has to be a surprise and we have two days to get it together." And she did a great job. We all had a great time and certainly Deb Hoffman was deserving of all of that recognition and praise and celebration. So Deb, we congratulate you again.
You need us to do anything Lauren? Thank you. Thanks for coming everybody.
And for those of you who have not had an opportunity to hear Brent's voice on our weather announcements this year, thank heavens. He is the Chief Communications Officer for the Port of Education.
Thank you Ms. Thomas. At this time, I'd like to ask Mr. Jeff Holloman, our Chief Financial Officer, to come on up. Onslow County Schools has received another award for financial management. This award is in addition to the two awards for excellence in financial reporting that were presented at the October Board Meeting. We'd like to congratulate the OCS Financial Services Department for receiving the North Carolina State Board of Education Achievement in Financial Resource Management Award. This is in recognition for the outstanding way the district managed its financial transactions of state public funds totaling over $148 million for the fiscal year of 2018. Of the 115 school districts in North Carolina, Onslow County Schools was one of only 10 districts to receive all three of these financial awards in one year. In addition, Onslow County Schools was the largest district in the state to successfully earn the State Board Award. So once again, we'd like to congratulate Mr. Holloman and his outstanding staff for their continued success as responsible stewards of our financial resources. And Madam Chair, our final recognition for this evening is going to be presented to our Onslow County Schools Board of Education members as a whole. The Silver Bell Award for Whole Board Training is presented tonight to the members of the Onslow County Board of Education for training excellence and commitment during the 2018-2019 North Carolina School Boards Association Academy of School Boardsmanship. That is a mouthful, but it does speak very highly of the level of commitment that our board has to their job and to the children and staff and students of Onslow County. So we appreciate you and present this award to you this evening. And Madam Chair, from the podium, that is your good news for this evening.
Thank you. And thank you to all of my fellow board members for making this award for us come true because this has not been something that we've received in the past and so it's good that we are working together to get that training. Members of the board, do you have any good news that you would like to share this evening? Mr. Williams?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yesterday was Veterans Day and I'd like to recognize all those veterans who are serving or who have served in the military and who will continue to serve in the Onslow County school system. Thank you.
Thank you. Well done. Let's give him a hand. Any other members of the board have any good news?
Well, I will.
Okay.
I was able to attend a very, very nice event at Hunter's Creek Middle School on November the 4th. They did an event called Technology Leaders Unconference. And without getting to all the details of all the various pieces of technology that were demonstrated, I will tell you that the students really were the leaders. They, the teachers didn't have to do any prompting. The students were able to answer any questions I had. They were able to present exactly what they did with the technology. And every, in every station that I went to, and I actually concentrated over the 6th grade hall, every one of those children were able to respond in a very, very meaningful and intelligent manner. It was very, very rewarding to see children who really understand what they're doing with technology. It's not just a thing, it's something that reinforces what they're doing in the classroom. So it was a great event and glad to attend.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I may, I'd like to report on two events that occurred here recently. On Tuesday, November the 5th, I had the privilege to attend a special ceremony at the Albert J Ellis Airport to recognize eight middle school visual artists whose works or works of art were selected to be displayed at the airport. The exhibit entitled Innovation in the Airport created a very nice professional booklet is located along the corridor on the second floor as passengers depart and arrive at OAJ. Airport Director Chris White stated that over 500,000 passengers pass through OAJ every year and the student artwork provides an opportunity to showcase the wonderful talent among our students. The art exhibit rotates every three months, giving our elementary students, artists, an opportunity to exhibit their work three months later at the high school. And we're proud to say that this art exhibit is in partnership between the Onslow County Board of Commissioners and the Onslow County Schools. Second event occurred the next day. It's an arts thing too, so bear with me. That's sort of my passion along with everything that we do.
That's why you got that award.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next day, the North Carolina Symphony performed their annual education concert for all of our 4th grader, grade students in the Wadok High School gym. It is during the 4th grading that students learn about the symphony and the different families of the orchestra, the strings, woodwind, brass, and percussion. Their elementary music teachers always do a great job in preparing the students for a concert by listening to the music to be performed, what to listen for within that music, and even preparing them to sing a song and being accompanied by the orchestra is just a really a wonderful experience and I'd like to thank all of our general music teachers for all your hard work because you spent about six weeks preparing these kids for that, if not longer. I don't know. It is a once in a lifetime an experience. I can assure you, for these kids, it's the first time they will ever hear a live professional orchestra and sadly, it may be their last. So it's a very positive thing. And thanks to Dr. Pill for facilitating these, both of these events. It was just a great job. And to those students at Wadok High Schools, those marshals, their job was to meet those kids as they arrived with the buses, get them into the gym as safely and in a timely manner. So those high school students, we depend on them greatly. So anyway, thank you ma'am.
Other members of the board have any news that they'd like to share?
Yes. I would just like to speak out for the community at large. There were several events that occurred. The Fairwood Memorial Observance, the Public Safety Memorial Observance, and the Freedom Fountain Observance. And just generally to thank all of the people, all of the agencies, and all of the civic leaders that invited us- leaders that invited us to view and participate in those events. It just goes to show what a great community we have. And in addition to that, as well, Marine Corps Command East, which recently had their Marine Corps Ball, which I was invited to attend. It was pretty amazing. They actually used people to recreate at least five memorials in Washington DC. And it was quite a pageant to see. But I, in general, I thank everyone and the entire community, to include Marine Corps Base, for all you do. Thank you.
If there's no, no other good news from us, let me assure you that there's probably many things that they have on their calendars that they haven't gone back to see what, what they have done. I wanted to point out to you that we have a lot of school events that we go to and you've noticed tonight that there are a lot of other events that we share, that we try to show up to and be liaisons between this school system and the community. So, I know that many of our board members do these things. I just want to point out a couple that I've had opportunity to, to attend. One was the Minority Enterprise Luncheon. And at that particular time, a former school board member, Reverend Joel Churchwell, received the Advocate of the Year Award and it was a very nice ceremony there. Several of us had an opportunity, and I believe Mr. Hudson may have done this as well, participated in a strategic planning interview for economic development. For us, you know that education is certainly an economic driver and I think that we play a very good part in getting businesses here. And I think Mr. Hudson, in his other hat, he probably got to speak to them as well. We had our Bases Award, which is businesses assisting schools and educating students. I don't know what the year, number of this is. Do you know, Brent? It's well over 20 some years.
1993.
1993. And it was a very, very well attended by the businesses. In fact, we had a nice, nice little ceremony. It lasted a total of 45 minutes with eating, listening to our people sing, our students seeing the colors, saying the pledge, and making those big awards. So, that was very nice. Also, members of the board had an opportunity to visit with Governor Cooper when he came to speak at Dixon and he had a little interview with our teachers. And hopefully, he heard our words and that we do want a budget signed and it coming back to, to us in some form. That being said, that's all of our good news. We appreciate you being here. And if you were here just for the good news this, tonight, feel free to take this opportunity to make your departure. I know some of you are anxious to get out there to see if it's snowing. And others are, are anxious to get home to get ready for another school day. Thank you for coming.
I think I need to step to the restroom. I had too much tea.
At this time, we'll begin our general business. Mr. Holloman, I know that you're anxious to hear this annual audit report in, in the open because we've been so pleased with it, but I know that you are the one who is responsible for this.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins. First line of General Statute 115(c)(447) authorizes local boards of education to contract for an annual independent audit, subject to approval by the Secretary of the Local Government Commission. Upon completion of the examination, the auditor shall provide a written report expressing his opinion on the financial statements. The independent audit firm, Anderson Smith Weick, or ASW, was engaged by the board to conduct the annual audit. ASW has completed the audit of the financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019, and provided the report that you previously received. At this time, I would ask Mr. Dell Smith, partner for ASW, to come forward to provide the audit report. There's no action required by the board for this agenda item, but Mr. Smith will deliver the report. Mr. Smith?
Good evening, board members. Dr. Collins, nice to see y'all all again. I think each of you has already received a bound copy of the report and y'all have had a chance to go over it in detail with, with Mr. Holloman. I would like to just quickly give you a brief summary of the results of our audit and go over the, the letters that are included in our audited financial statements. Our audit is basically separated into two sections. We perform an audit of the actual finances of, finances of the school system, which includes the, the numbers or amounts that you see in the audit report. And we also perform an audit of the school system's compliance with various state and federal laws and regulations that pertains primarily to the federal and state dollars that the district receives, which is most of the funding that y'all get. There are a total of four audited opinion letters in the financial statements that we've issued that relate to these two audit sections. And all four of these opinion letters are clean, unmodified reports, meaning that we noted no issues or areas of concern and that we feel the financial information included in the report is reliable and free from any sort of material misstatement. Collectively, these letters represent the highest level of assurance that a school system can receive in its financial statement audit. I think these letters speak very highly of your finance department staff as, as well as the other various department heads that, that have to be audited as, as part of what we do. I think it lets you know that, you know, they're, they're doing what they're supposed to do. The dollars are being spent where they're supposed to be spent and in accordance with the budgets that, that y'all have adopted. In regards to the financial condition of the school system, as of June 30th, 2019, we feel the financial condition of the board appears to be sound and fund balances of all the district's major funds. This includes general fund, capital outweigh, child nutrition, fund balances in all of those funds are deemed to be at adequate levels. So, I think overall, we were very pleased with what we saw from a, a financial audit standpoint.
Did any of the board have any questions or comments they'd like to make? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
It's always a pleasure to see you and to get a great report.
Same here. I'd like to thank Mr. Holloman and his staff. They, and I always say it every year, but they, they really do a great job of managing the finances of the district.
He reminds us of that.
I'm sure he does. I'm sure he does. Y'all take care.
Dr. Karinek, who is the Chief of Human Resources and Student Services, well now, she's already slipped up here.
I'm just making the most of my time that I've got with you tonight. And I do thank you for this opportunity to have a little time on your agenda to give a couple of brief updates about some current initiatives that we are working on in the Department of Human Resources and Student Services. This also is just an information-only presentation and doesn't require a vote. We just want to give some updates. So, often we find ourselves in the kind of overwhelming nature of the day-to-day, that it's difficult to work on long-term plans and initiatives. So, we have just made a commitment that we were going to work on a few long-term programs and, and get beyond just the day-to-day survival this year. So, I'd like to give you an update on two of those. The first one is our Future Teachers of Onslow Initiative. So, I've, I've got some folks that are going to help me with this. I'm going to ask Steve Clark and Mandy Sherman and Wilson Rao to come join me. And while they're coming up, I'll give kind of an overview and then they're going to give us the school-level perspective. This idea really came from honestly, the terrific experience that my own kids have had as part of the CTE programs and clubs that are available for students interested in health careers. And I would be at events with them and be having a great experience and look around and say, "We need to do this for, for kids that want to become teachers and, and want an education career." And we talked about it together and said, you know, "We, we think we could do a little more to encourage that." So, I, and I'm, I'm talking about this as if it's a new idea. This isn't any new idea. We're just kind of picking up some former ideas, Teacher Cadet and Future Teachers of America, and dusting those off and trying to renew those notions. You know, Mr. Wiggins, he, he reminded me this week about the fact that we have to water and tend to the plants that we want to grow. And so, this is just, that's what we're trying to do here, is to just focus some attention and support and encouragement on something that we would like to grow. Our goal is to provide district, district-level organization and support to encourage all of our high schools to have a Future Teachers of Onslow chapter at their site. And so, we're, it's just a fledgling process. We've just gotten started. We started talking about this at the end of last school year under Dr. Collins' leadership in this position and got it started this summer. We have chapter advisors that have been named at all of our high schools and those chapter advisors are at different points in the process of getting started in offering career and college exploration activities for students who are interested in exploring a career in education. As with everything that we do in this district, it depends on the principals and the teachers who are willing to carry it out and to add another thing to their plate. And so, I'm going to let Mr. Clark talk a little bit about how he's kind of embraced this idea at Dixon High School and let his group share a little bit.
Thank you. Good evening. As Dr. Karinek said, my name is Steve Clark and I'm honored to serve as the principal at Dixon High School where we are on a mission to love, serve, and care. With me this evening is Ms. Mandy Sherman. Ms. Sherman is an outstanding English teacher at Dixon High School. She also serves as our Future Teachers of Onslow Advisor. And Mr. Wilson Rao, Mr. Rao, a junior, is a positive student leader on our campus and is a member of Future Teachers of Onslow. Thank you for allowing us to be here to share the activities of FTO and future plans for our students. Future Teachers of Onslow is a club that provides collaboration, opportunities among educators, students, and the community. Ms. Sherman will share the types of activities that our FTO students will be engaged in.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of Future Teachers of Onslow and share some of the things that we are hoping to, some goals for our club members. So, some of those are providing opportunities for community involvement, such as coming to a school board meeting. So, we're, we're getting one checked tonight. Realistic education activities that help students to decide, you know, what level they might want to teach and, and job shadowing and internships, which one of my Future Teachers members actually just completed at Dixon Elementary. She had a great experience, as Dr. Karinek mentioned, looking at school pathways, so what financially, academically, socially is going to work for our students to be able to pursue that degree in education. And as Dr. Karinek, also is helping to understand the scholarship opportunities. So, there are a lot of programs that exist that students just might not know about that we're able to expose them to. Always effective communication and leadership skills, so if they come out of this and they end up ultimately not being a teacher, I have some students that sort of are interested in speech or working with the school system, but that's, those skills are transferable no matter what they're, they go into. Opportunities to investigate, investigate global education issues through technology and working with children and peers in a peer tutoring environment. So, one thing that we have actually been able to do, and Mr. Clark was wonderful in sort of making sure that this could happen, was that we just went to UNCW for a Future Teacher Conference and Mr. Rao is going to share some of what we did there.
Yeah, so, we spent the day at UNCW visiting with their professors and they would talk to us about a wide, wide range of educational opportunities that we have available to us. We were also giving, given helpful, helpful advice involving the application and acceptance processes at universities. The trip was really helpful to all of us that went because not only did it encourage us more to be teachers in our future, but it also allowed us to be more informed on our career paths and what we want to pursue in life.
Great job. So, we would like to thank Dr. Karinek and the Human Resources for their support of FTO in Onslow County. It is important that we promote the teaching profession to our students. As you know, we have very talented and gifted students in our school system. Through FTO, we strive to have more students choose education as their career path and grow our own. So, let me take you through the intended pathway for Mr. Rao. Mr. Rao, could you step forward for just a moment, please? So, so the pathway for Mr. Rao to become a Future Teacher of Onslow County Schools would look something like this. So, he would be a member of FTO. Check. Good job. And he attends events with Ms. Sherman, like the Future Teachers of Onslow Conference, that will be held at the Regional Skills Center on Thursday, April the 9th. As a senior, he will enroll in Ms. Sherman's Teacher Cadet course and will have an informed and realistic idea of how our classrooms, our school, and the Onslow County school system operates. He will then attend East Carolina University. Go Pirates! That's right. He just learned that today, by the way. I just told him that today. So, he's going to gain a degree in secondary history education. But during each summer, he's going to come back home, because that's what typically our students do, right? They come home during the summertime. So, during the summer, he's going to spend about two to three weeks with Ms. Sherman on effective teaching practices in Onslow County. After four years, Mr. Rao is hired as a full-time teacher in the Onslow County school system. Congratulations. That's awesome. You know, as Dr. Barnes, Principal Wyandotte High School, and I were talking this morning about this, if each of our high schools could recruit about 10 students to go through this program each year, considering about five years, we would have about 70 students of our own that we would hire as teachers and come back home. So, that sounds pretty awesome right there. So, congratulations, Ms. Sherman. Thank you for making a positive impact on our students. Congratulations, Mr. Rao. Thank you for your positive leadership and for your future impact on the students of Onslow County. You're awesome. You're the best and you rock. Thank you.
Gosh, they, he outdid me. There's some other folks in the audience who are working on this initiative with us that I want to recognize and I want to have you stand up in the audience. Tanya LaRose is the advisor at Wyandotte High School. Her principal, Dr. Barnes, is also back there with you. Go ahead and stand up. Yep, mhm. Yep, mhm. And they brought along with them Brianna Marshall, who is a student member at White Oak High School. Brianna is interested in becoming a science or health teacher. Yeah. They are getting some influence here. She's also maybe interested in ECU, but we talked about a lot of different places. And I can tell you from just from chatting with Brianna before the meeting, most of our principals would say they'd hire her today, right? I mean, she has the persona. You can tell she's going to be successful in whatever she chooses, and we hope that she does choose education. Also next to her is Lisa Godwin. Stand up, Lisa. Lisa has, as most of you know, is the former North Carolina Teacher of the Year, but I have a new title for her. She is our HVC, Highly Valued Consultant. She's our Highly Valued Consultant. And so, she has been coming to our meetings and helping us think big. And she also, when they talk about the student who had a great experience through CTE internship, it was Lisa's classroom. Can you imagine? We can have a high school student do their CTE internship in future teaching, and they get to observe and work with the North Carolina Teacher of the Year. What a great resource that we have here. Do I have any other? I don't have any of my other advisors. Oh, Nicole. Yes. Yes. If you will stand up. Nicole Loya is Swansboro High School. Thank you. And she's also here, she's the advisor from Swansboro. And there are some others who couldn't be here tonight, but I want to mention their names. Chris Meek from Northside High School is the advisor there, and Alicia Hamel from Jacksonville High School. She's been really helpful. She's also been very involved in FBLA, the Business Group, and so, she's been able to give us some ideas there. Erin Walsh from the Early College. Erin has, she's got the record so far. She has 17 student members in her group already. These advisors have been super active. They, just the folks that I've mentioned here tonight, they have a total of 70. How did you know I was going to say that number? We have 70 student members across the district already. So, when we first met this summer, and we talked about, you know, having a conference and doing, and they're, they said, "Well, CJ, what are we going to do?" I said, "I don't know, you know? We're going to eat pizza and talk about teaching." And so, now, we're meeting, and these advisors, most of them are meeting with their groups twice a month and telling me they don't have enough time. So, there's certainly enough to do. We would like to take students to visit the Schools of Education, and they've done that already, and the Swansboro Group also went to the UNCW Day. White Oak is looking at going to an ECU Day. There are some challenges with doing that. One is having bus transportation, paying for bus transportation, taking these students out of classes, and that's not always going to be possible. We found already that that's a struggle, particularly the transportation. So, we are, in case you missed Mr. Clark mentioning this, we are working on tentatively planning our own local event, where we would ask the university folks to come to us, and we've tentatively have that scheduled at the Regional Skills Center for April 9th. So, I'll send you a calendar invite when we get that firmed up. And one last thing that I want to mention about this initiative is that it is not just Dr. Gartner and I in Human Resources Student Services. This really is a cross-departmental and school initiative. Dr. Collins is the one who got us going with talking to the high school principals last winter and spring about would they be willing to support something like this? And we started talking about, imagine your great high school students now, and what if they became teachers and came back and taught with you in four years? Brent Anderson comes to every planning session. He's really been a key person in just making things happen. And Dr. Folger and her staff, particularly the CTE Department, they've been very supportive, and we're continuing to kind of brainstorm ways that we can intersect on this initiative. So, thank you very much, especially all of you but Wilson. Thank you so much.
We're going to grow our own and pour water on it. Dr. Collins, can't we help with some transportation?
We, they've made it work. Like, you can see that these groups have been able to do that. You know, we do have a bus driver shortage, and so, in a shortage time, it's a challenge. But we also like the idea of bring it here, and so, we'll want you all to be involved in that as well. Yeah. So, I'm going to change gears a little bit, but sort of in the same vein with Future Teachers. And I'm going to talk about another long-term initiative. This one also has some cross-departmental involvement. The Onslow Cohort for the Certificate in Elementary Mathematics Education, also a mouthful, we are underway. And so, I'm going to invite Dr. Ron Preston to come join me, and Danielle Yocum, who is a teacher at Dixon Elementary School. You may recall from our budget sessions and budget workshops, talking about this program. Recently, the, there we go, good job. Recently, the National Council for Teacher Quality completed a comprehensive study of North Carolina teacher education programs. And one of their conclusions was that there's only one elementary education program in the state that requires sufficient coursework in the mathematics content knowledge elementary teachers need to know. Now, Dr. Preston and I have talked about this study a little bit, and we guessed that the one program in the state that has, was deemed by this National Council to have sufficient mathematics coursework was NC State. Turns out, Dr. Preston, we must stand corrected. It actually is Elon University, interestingly enough. And so, this study and our focus in the district on mathematics got us talking about what could we do? And we have decided to partner with ECU to offer the Graduate Certificate in Elementary Mathematics Education, and I'm going to ask Dr. Preston to give you a little overview of that program.
Thank you for allowing me to share some things that I'm very passionate about. And so, you'll see behind me a slide that has some of our goals for the program. We intend to help teachers deepen their instructional skill, certainly deepen and strengthen their mathematical knowledge and their ability to communicate mathematics to their students. If you go ahead and switch to the next slide, though, I'll camp out there for the most part. And this certificate, which has those goals of the instructional skill and the deepening of the mathematics knowledge, consists of six courses. Each of the six courses marries mathematics content and a bit of pedagogy, what we call a high-leverage teaching practice that's research-based, and researchers tell us that we need more of this in the classroom. The greatest friend of the mathematical teacher is a good mathematical task that'll engage students, open them up to a challenge, and allow a good teacher to informally assess what's going on and where students are going, where they're strong, and where they need help. And so, our first course in our schedule of courses features mathematical tasks, is a high-leverage teaching practice, and then looks at number, whole number systems, operations, and what becomes a huge part of the elementary curriculum and sets that base. Each of the additional classes then builds on that, again, with some high-leverage teaching practice, whether it's focus on discourse, specifically on questioning students, whether it is classroom interactions, teacher-student, and more importantly, what we've learned is that we need that student-student interaction. Students don't get any chance to discuss mathematics, to talk mathematically, except in a mathematics classroom typically. They may get a little bit of that at home if they're very, very fortunate. And so, the classes then pick up with rational number, with data analysis, with algebraic reasoning, and we're not talking about a formal algebra class, but algebraic reasoning, where you're really looking at patterns and those sorts of things. And then, kind of capping that off at the end of the high-leverage teaching practice with a class on assessment, really focusing in on informal assessments that are used for instructional purposes, as well as formal assessments, which may lead to grades or informing the general public about how students are doing. So, we're excited about these courses. Let me say that in these courses, these courses were developed by seven of our system universities here in North Carolina. So, we brought expertise from across the state. No one university really probably had the expertise to pull off these courses in quite the same way that this group of seven universities did. We worked in teams across universities to develop the course, courses, taught them in pilot form around the state in some different areas, came back and revisioned those courses. Continue to improve the courses as we move along, but after a couple of big pilots, we sort of settled them into the structure that they're in right now, with a little bit of tweaking based on how the curriculum in North Carolina changes from time to time. So, we try to be sensitive to that. This project, you can see the timeline is a two calendar-year timeline, one course per semester, spring, summer, fall, spring, summer, fall, allowing for a lot of focus on each individual class. These classes are designed for practitioners, so full-time teachers taking a class, and their classroom becomes the laboratory for trying some of the things that we advocate for, and teachers get to see immediately whether these will work or not. They get to put them in action. The alumni of this program to date, we've been doing this for seven or eight years now, are resource teachers in schools, they're lead teachers in schools, they're sometimes ordinary teachers in school, but with an extra mathematical expertise. Sometimes, they're teaching all the mathematics at the fifth-grade level in a particular school. Sometimes, they're coaches, sometimes they're instructional leaders. One of them teaches with me at East Carolina University now. One of them is finishing up a doctorate at my old university, Indiana University. They're doing lots of things, but most of them are right in schools, doing what we would hope they would do, and that is improve the instruction, teaching, and learning of mathematics in the classroom. Our faculty at ECU, I'm happy to say that of those of us teaching the courses, I'm probably the weakest link there. Everybody else keeps getting awards and getting recognitions and things of that sort. Maybe I've already had mine, and my time has passed for that. But we have a very strong group of faculty who are very engaged and get the teachers involved, and we tend to support them to go to conferences and things of that sort, even additionally with, at the university. And so, we build up a real community of learners. We're excited about this opportunity, because we already have a group of people with a natural affinity, they're in one particular area. I've only been able to do that once earlier with this program, it was in Cumberland County, and there's just something extra special when you've got this group of people who, maybe more than one person from a school, coming together. You're across the county, you can support each other, you're going to see each other, and that kind of cohort program is an awesome program. Some additional opportunities for teachers, once they've done this, they can decide to go on and do a master's degree if they want to. But this is the program that we believe gets right down to the heart and soul of elementary mathematics and equips our teachers to be the best instructional leaders that they can be.
Thank you, Dr. Preston. So, this is kind of where we are. We had an information session in October, and I'm happy to tell you that 50 of our teachers came to that information session, and it did my heart good to have only, standing room only, literally, in that session. We weren't sure where we were going to put the rest of the people. And that was a big relief to me, because I was concerned that after championing this idea and you all committing resources to it, that maybe I wouldn't be able to convince teachers to do it. So, it was really, I mean, our employees, they've got heart and soul and are willing to put forth the effort if we just put the opportunities in front of them. So, unfortunately, we didn't actually have funding for that many, and so, we did have a selection process, and 26 third, fourth, and fifth-grade teachers have been selected for the program, and they are currently, we're working with them, and they're enrolling for January 2020 in that first course. And one of those teachers is Danielle Yocum. So, I'm going to ask Danielle to come, just give you a word about her interest in this program.
Thank you. Thank you, members of the board, colleagues, and educational stakeholders. The dedicated teachers of Onslow County have been given a great gift. As educators, we are constantly looking for ways to improve ourselves, not only in the classroom, but also as lifelong learners. We have spent hours researching the latest methods, the newest strategies, and the best differentiation strategies to meet the needs of each one of our students. With this cohort in elementary mathematics education, we will have the support of like-minded educators right here in our own county. We will use this cohort to build a network of fellow professionals that we otherwise would not have the pleasure of working with. We will learn and apply high-yield strategies that are tried, true, and research-based. We will lead by example, that learning never ends. And with that, we will show our students the true growth mindset. I have been teaching for almost two decades, and I am so honored and grateful to be a part of this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Thanks for coming. And is Anna, are you Anna? Stand up, Anna. Anna Prindl is also one of the teachers selected to participate, and she is from Southwest Elementary School, and so, she agreed to come out tonight as well. And so, congratulations to both of you. I'm so proud of you for, I mean, it's a risk-taking thing for these teachers to say, "Yeah, I'm willing to go sign up for six courses in mathematics, and I'm willing to come to a board meeting and get up and speak." Thanks. Thanks for coming, Anna. At this point, I'm going to close and open it up if you have any other questions or comments, and thank you for the chance to share this information and to have some of our folks come and share with you as well. It's a good leadership opportunity for our students and our teachers to come and interact with you this way. So, I appreciate it. Members of the board, you had anyone have a comment?
I have a question for Dr. Krennic. Dr. Krennic, you mentioned that the cohort was at 26, and yet, there were 50 people that came. What's the cost per instructor or educator that we would send? In other words, how much additional funding would be needed to expand the cohort even further? And if additional funding was necessary, do we have the resources to support expansion of the cohort? I mean, mathematics at elementary age, we've talked previously, carries on through the student's success at middle school and high school. So, it's that foundational level that we really need to put the resources at.
So, that's a great question, and we struggled with that as well. Where's Dr. Bolris? And Dr. Gartner and I sat around with the list of the folks and says, said, "Gosh, do we, do we want to turn anybody away? Where's there some more money?" The tuition costs, like, I don't have a number for you of total cost out. Like, right now, what we're looking at is it's about $750 per course, and the money that you've already funded is going to pay for the first two, the spring course and the summer course for the 26 people. And I don't know, you know, you all could look back at the budget deliberations and hold me to it. Originally, we only said 20. But because we had such a great response, and when we looked at the money that was placed in the budget by the board, we figured we could afford 26. And what the 26 gave, there were 50 that came to the meeting. There were about 37 that actually then followed up and applied. And the 26 were third, fourth, and fifth-grade teachers. We did have some interest from people that were in other roles, other grade levels, even some instructional coaches. And so, I think we would like to look at that down the road, but the 26- And so I think we would like to look at that down the road, but the 26 that gave us the, the third, fourth, and fifth classroom teachers, those grade levels, that was the original intent of this. And so we said, let's go back to our original intent. 26 is a great number for a cohort group. You want to have at least 20, you know, they'll, there will be, I, I hope we don't have it, but it's just unrealistic to think that we won't have a few people whose plans change, but the 26 gives us enough of a number there that even if we had a few people who couldn't follow through, that we'd still have the 20 that we originally planned on. So we did kick this around a, a good bit and thought that this was the core group to start with. And then, and if it's as successful as we're hoping, then we would come back for another cohort. Because obviously, the interest is there.
Thank you.
CJ, that amount of money, though, that we allotted in our budget also included some type of stipend as well.
So this, yeah, that'll, that, we're actually, I'm so glad you all asked this question because this is year one. You know, year two will need a little bit more than, you know, we'll need what we needed for year one and a little bit more because we'll, they'll be in a fall, spring, summer, they'll be in more courses in the future year. So, yeah, we'll be bringing this back to the table and asking for your continued support on this one.
It is a great investment.
It is a great investment.
I'm glad that we have teachers who are willing to do it. I'm just really proud of them and excited that they, that they are willing to, to step out and, and do it.
The dedication of our teachers. Thank you.
Dr. Prinnick, so we won't be waiting until this cohort finishes all of their six courses before starting another cohort, would we?
That'll be up to, you know, that'll be up to us as a group.
I would be interested in a new cohort annually. And I appreciate the concentration on classroom teachers as, as opposed to more ancillary or, you know, different, different educators. You know, the kids that are, the teachers rather, are impacting kids just before they go to middle school, that third, fourth, and fifth is a great way to prioritize. So thanks for that clarification. But, but I, I really like the idea of multiple cohorts going forward in partnership with ECU.
I'm sure Dr. Preston loves that idea, too.
Yes. And at some point, having focus at K1, 2, there's a lot of pressure on third, fourth, and fifth, obviously because of testing. But if you can lay a really good foundation at K1 and 2, that makes things go much better at 3, 4, and 5 as well.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks to all, all the folks who came out. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Dr. Gartner, Director of Student Services.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Collins. North Carolina General Statute 115C 379 directs the State Board of Education to create rules that define what constitutes a lawful or unlawful student absence from school. And the State Board has recently updated its policy. And so the changes that I'm presenting tonight in Policy 4400 for student attendance just are changes to reflect the most recent requirements from the State Board of Education. There's just a few changes to our existing policy. One is in Section B6, which simply adds the term legal guardian. So the terminology is the same in our policy as it is in the State Board policy. And Section B8 is the most substantial change. Previously, when we have students who are the children of military members, when they are either getting ready to leave to, on, getting called to on leave from or returning from a combat zone, principals have had their discretion to excuse absences to allow the family members to spend time with them. The State Board has updated this policy to require a minimum of two days that students are granted every year with the stipulation that those students are not in danger of academic failure because of excessive absences that already exist in their record. The only other policy is to add the word additional, where we had previously, where this principal had the discretion, we've now, just changing the wording to say that the principal has a discretion to add additional days rather than just the two minimum. And that's all, and I would respectfully ask, did you consider a motion to approve these policy updates?
Does the board have, do we have a motion to approve the changes to the attendance policy 4400?
Motion, a second.
Motion, a second. Any comments on this? Had an opportunity to look at it pretty well, I think straightforward. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, Dr. Gartner.
Thank you.
Mr. Anderson. We just need you a little chair up there.
I'm sitting good right over there. I don't want to, yeah, so we're good. Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins want to bring before you tonight our 2020, 2021, which is a mouthful of numbers to, to go through with our school calendar. We decided a couple of years ago that we were going to do a two-year calendar cycle, and I'll get into why we didn't do that last year and go ahead and approve this one as we go through the presentation. So just for a refresher, just to keep everybody mindful of the legislation that currently exists for the school calendar, the current legislation does set beginning and ending dates for the school calendar as it exists right now. Exceptions can be made for year-round and early college, which is why we have three calendars that we'll be looking at tonight. There's the traditional calendar, then we have our year-round and our early college. So looking at those. School calendars for the traditional level must cover at least nine months and have a minimum of 185 days or 1,025 hours of instruction. The 1,025 hours of instruction is highlighted because that is what we choose to do in Onslow. We don't necessarily focus on the number of days, but we focus on hours of instruction that is provided within the school calendar. School calendars also must have nine, a minimum of nine teacher workdays, a minimum of 10 annual leave days, and the same or equivalent number of legal holidays, which is 11, that occur within the calendar as those designated by the State Personnel Commission for state employees. The color of those things there, teacher workdays, annual leave days, and holidays being blue, green, and red, are corresponding to the colors that we use on our calendars. So we mark the calendars colored so it's easier to keep up with what day is what. The final two bullets there, school shall not be held on a Sunday. It does actually say that in the legislation, as if we needed somebody to tell us that we weren't going to have school on a Sunday. And the last one there is particularly important, given the importance of yesterday in our community especially, is that Veterans Day shall be a holiday. And by legislation, whatever day Veterans Day falls on is the day that we observe it. If it falls on a Saturday, it's the Friday before. If it falls on a Sunday, or if it falls on a Saturday, it's Friday before. If it falls on a Sunday, it's the Monday following. So, but other than that, it's on the day. If it's on a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, we will have that day off for Veterans Day. Now, it's important to remember when we look at the calendar, we've mentioned the number of instructional hours. Additionally, each school calendar has to have 215 days total. Teachers are salaried employees, and that is the length of the year for a teacher contract is 215 days. So whenever we create a school calendar, from the first teacher workday to the last must be no more than 215 days, or we're responsible for paying any overage that we would exceed that 215 days. So basically, you take the number of instructional days, you add the number of teacher workdays, add the number of annual leave days and holidays, that totals 215. So it's pretty basic math as we go through and take a look at the creation of the school calendar. Now, we have looked at, and there are other school systems in the state that are considering other options as far as what we have. The two most popular options that are being considered by other districts include a compacted traditional calendar, which is the first column there on the left, which would allow high schools to have Christmas exams before the Christmas break. It would give, however, a shortened first semester and a regular-length second semester. Basically, what would happen in that situation is that you would add time to the school day for the first semester to make up instructional hours, and so it all balances out at the end of the year so that we're getting everything even where it would need to be. There would also, though, with that type of option, have impacts on classified staff. If we were to end up any decreases of numbers of days or hours that we were in school, it could have impacts for our transportation and child nutrition workers. Because if they're not, if we don't have kids in school, then they are not going to be working. So they do not get paid for the days that they are not working with that. Another option that is being looked at by a few systems across the state is determining that the entire school district would be a year-round district, considering all the schools in the district is year-round, which would allow them, New Hanover is the one that is closest to us that is doing it comparable in size to Onslow, they have moved forward with that for next school year, where they will be starting at the beginning of August, around August 3rd with their students, and finishing up before Memorial Day in the spring. And that gives them, with teacher workdays in July and teacher workdays in June, that gives them teachers working for the entire year, which would technically be a year-round or a modified year-round school system. So we are not choosing to use either of these options for next year, but are certainly open to looking at how these experiments are going to go over. There were a number of school systems who used the compacted traditional calendar last year. However, Hurricane Florence threw a wrench in the works for us to see how that worked. So we really want to see if there's an educational benefit to trying to make that happen and what impacts that could have on our students, on our staff, on a number of things, as with the year-round district as well. Certainly, we want to look at impacts on scheduling events, especially at middle and high school with athletics. If we're looking at any kind of an intercession like we have now with our traditional year-round calendar schools, we've got, you know, three weeks that the kids are out during the course of the year. What kind of impacts would that have for continuity of, of educational services, especially at middle and high school, being able to provide for extracurricular events such as athletics, looking at that? If we're a, a year-round school, playing schools that are not year-round, how does that work if our staff is not working and there are? There's a lot of considerations that we've got to put into that, not just with athletics, but with other things that would also be impacted if we had calendars that were not really synced up with everything else. We also want to consider the impacts that any calendar change would have on our military population. That is a big driver of things that we look at when we make considerations of how we move forward and what we do. So we want to look and make sure that, that we wouldn't be negatively impacting those, that part of our community, or would a calendar change benefit our military community as they come in and PCS in and out of the community? So a lot of things to consider, but there are other options out there, and we are open to taking a look at that as we start to develop the next round of school calendars. So looking at the 21, 22 school calendar as we go through. So looking at the timeline of how this all came together, we put the school calendars together last year for consideration and would have presented them at the, during the spring of last year. But what we found is that as we went through the school year last year, there were a number of bills that were presented asking for calendar flexibility. There were probably a record number of bills that were introduced in the General Assembly asking for that kind of flexibility, be it aligning LEAs with the community college calendar, or just giving the local school board the authority to make the decision about what they wanted to do with the calendar, which is, I think, what would be preferable across the state. But, so there were a lot of things there, a lot of unknowns of how it was going to go. So we did make the decision last spring that we would hold off on presenting calendars for consideration until we saw if any action was going to be taken by the General Assembly. Unfortunately, there was no action taken on those bills. So by the time we got to the realization that none of that was going to happen, we had a number that made it to crossover, but there were some that just kind of went into the committee and died there before they came out, passed one house, but met opposition in the other. So we, we worked around that. So the decision was made this year to go ahead and move forward with the drafts that we have. We want our public to know what we're doing next year for school calendars, so people can go ahead and begin making decisions as we go through. So the original drafts were developed last year with feedback from our Teacher of the Year Council. We had the Quality Council System Involvement Team, executive staff, looking at what we were going to do with the calendars. We did present and share those calendars with principals and directors and Teacher of the Year Council on October 16th. And on October 29th, we had a district-wide calendar vote. We put it out to our staff, our full-time and staff, and were able to give their feedback on which calendar they preferred of the options that were presented. And tonight, we are presenting those options to the board and sharing what the, what the district wanted in terms of what they would like to see in a school calendar. So you have copies of the drafts, but I wanted to kind of make it a little more succinct and say, here's kind of the differences between the two traditional calendars. These are just kind of what we would normally see. Both of the calendars do begin on August 26th and end on Friday, June 11th, the legislatively mandated beginning and ending dates that we have. Calendar Option A had a 90-day first semester and a 90-day second semester. Calendar Option B had a 90-day first semester and an 89-day second semester. And there's really one major difference between the two calendars, which was a no-day on the Monday following the Easter holiday, which would give us that day off as a, a no-day unless we needed to use it for a weather makeup day. So it gave a little bit more flexibility and extended that spring break for the, the week before and then the following Monday. Given the parameters that we have to work with in the current legislation, that is about the only difference that we're able to really make substantively between the two different versions of the calendars. Altogether, both calendars have 215 days total. Calendar A has 1,065 instructional hours, and Calendar Version B has 1,059 instructional hours. So those are the traditional calendar drafts, which are kind of the normal school calendars. The other two copies of drafts that you have are our year-round calendar and the early college calendar. The year-round calendar, there was just one draft that was considered for that. We did make that in conjunction with talking to our principals at our year-round schools at Northwoods and Clyde Irwin, and getting feedback from them about what worked well, what we wanted to look at how we do that. The year-round calendar will start on Thursday, July 16th, and end on Wednesday, June 9th, 2021. That calendar has an even semester, first and second, which doesn't necessarily matter as much for an elementary because they don't really look at things in a semester-type format, but it's an easy way of thinking of how do we break the year up as we go through. There's 180 instructional days, the requisite number of workdays, leave days, holidays. There are no, no-days built into that calendar, but they have a total of 215 for 1,065 instructional hours. The early college calendar, and again, both of these have flexibility to start earlier than August 26th by legislation. So statutorily, they can do this. The early college will begin on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, and end on Wednesday, May 19th, 2021. And I will tell you that when we look at how we would like to structure the calendar for schools in Onslow County, and I know I've talked to my colleagues in other districts that do the same job that I do here with the calendar, and they feel the same, is that we would be looking at a calendar that would be more akin to what we have with the early college, which would align our schools with the community college schedule, with the rest of the university system across the state and most of the rest of the country is pretty much aligned that way as well. So this would be one we would ideally like to work towards as a district, unless, until we get that flexibility, however, we work with what we're given. The early college calendar has two 90-day semesters, 14 workdays, 10 leave days. They do have a no-day built in, and theirs looks a little different than the traditional calendar because we do work that one in conjunction with Coastal to make sure that that calendar aligns with days that they are in session at Coastal, days that they are not in session there. We want to make sure we've got workdays for our kids so everything aligns facilities-wise, and we're not putting a burden on the college to be able to have to watch out or open up when they're not normally in session. Now, the calendar vote results, we had 2,205 votes on October 29th, that we put that out there. There were 1,062 responses from our traditional elementary and childhood, early childhood center, grades pre-K through 5. That was about 48.2% of the votes came from our elementary group. We had about 34.5% from our secondary, grades 6 through 12. And we did include Dixon Middle School as a secondary, so they voted with the secondary group instead of the elementary, even though they have fifth grade at Dixon Middle, made it a little easier there. We had 52 votes or responses from our year-round schools, that is both Northwoods and Clyde Irwin total. The entire staff of the early college did take a vote on whether they liked their calendar or not. They had seven responses. And we had 323 responses on the calendar vote from central office, transportation, and our bus drivers across the district. So as a result of the vote, looking at the traditional school calendar, the difference between Option A and Option B, Version A and B, overwhelmingly, Version B was the one that was preferred. They had 1,335 responses in favor. I think it was the no-day that did it on that one. They, they liked that extra day at, at spring break, so we get that Monday off. Version A had 811 responses. So we had a, a good turnout and a, a good response rate for that. It was interesting to see, we used Microsoft Forms, which is part of our Office Suite that I know you've heard Mr. Taylor and Mr. Pittman talk about. It was neat throughout the day to be able to pull that up and actually see the numbers change as votes were being made across the district. So it was great. We set it to begin at, it opened at 5:30 in the morning. We set it to begin at, it opened at 5:30 in the morning, and it closed at 5:00 PM in the afternoon. So everybody had ample opportunity to get in and get a vote on that one. For our year-round and early college calendars, what we asked them there was if they could support the calendar as it was proposed. So we didn't have drafts for them to consider, but we did ask if they could support. And for the year-round calendar, we had 52 responses, 50 positive, and we had two that could not support the calendar. So we did go with that one as 50 to 2 on there. And for the early college, they win the award of having 100% voter participation, all precincts in, and it was seven votes in favor of the early college calendar, and they could support the calendar as it was presented. So as a result of the vote that we conducted on October 29th, the 2021, 2020 and 2021 calendar version B received the highest number of votes and is presented along with the 2020-2021 year-round and early college calendars for your approval tonight.
We've heard all of the data that's been presented, and it's quite similar to what we hear every year.
Every year.
You don't have a lot of flexibility in the way you make these calendars.
I'm hoping to be able to give a different presentation of the calendar next year, Madam Chair. It'd be refreshing.
Maybe you'll be able to.
I hope so. I hope so.
So at this time, I ask for a motion to approve the action that's requested by our staff.
Make such a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion or comments?
The simple thing would be to get the General Assembly to allow us to have calendar flexibility.
Yes, sir.
And we've been trying for 14 years.
Yep. We have. And it is hopefully one of those things that we will be able to get to eventually. We have had conversations with our elected officials at the state level. We've also had conversation with some of the business owners and business people here in Onslow County, which seem to be one of the areas that we get a lot of the resistance to making calendar changes on. One of the things that we've always talked about in looking at the calendar is that we don't want to extend the calendar. We're not talking about extending it or shortening summer. What we want to do is be able to shift the whole thing, to start earlier, which would then allow us to end earlier. We start at the beginning of August, which would allow us to end before Memorial Day, which is the traditional start of summer. So it would, you'd make up any business loss at the beginning of summer rather than trying to do it at the end. And just kind of getting people to realize that it's just a shift rather than extending any beginning or ending time.
I'm just getting ready to answer.
Yeah.
I'm glad you said it. The positives outnumber the drawbacks.
Yes, sir, I think they would.
From an educational standpoint.
It would put us more in line with the community college, the rest of the university system. I know we've all, a lot of us at the table, and a lot of people watching in the audience have children who've attended college, and we've all probably attended college ourselves at one time or another, know that it was nice to be finished before Christmas break. That's a nice thing to have happen. Then you have an unfettered Christmas break for students and families that don't have to worry about projects or work and doing other things like that. But flip that around and also think from the perspective of our school administrators, thinking of our high school principals in particular, who have right now, if we're lucky and don't lose those two workdays at the end of the semester, they've got maybe two to four days to completely turn around a school and get it ready for the second semester. If you've got students who are in danger of not passing, who need to have specialized kind of consideration for their schedules, you've got to do that really quickly. And these people do a great job working in our high schools of making it happen in the short time period that we have. If we had two weeks or more at Christmas break, it would give them a lot more time to take a look at how can we best meet the needs of our students, and what can we do to better structure our schedules, so we're not trying to get everything done in two-and-a-half days to get it turned around and give them schedules, so when they walk in on that day, they've got a schedule in hand, but really be thoughtful and really be deliberate in how they go about creating schedules for our students. I think that would be the biggest benefit. The exams before Christmas is great. It gives a lot of flexibility in what we can do, but I think in terms of the service that we can provide for our students, it is a win for everybody concerned that they could have those exams and have that time to have the turnaround to be ready for that second semester.
I see it as a, I see it as a, an advantage to our dual-enroll students to begin the next semester.
Yes, ma'am.
Right after Christmas.
It is.
As well as to any teachers who will be in the cohort that we just spoke about, or other teachers who are taking classes to further their degrees.
I would agree.
You also have those students who can graduate at mid-year and start in the four-year institutions as well.
Yes, sir, because right now, you've got that overlap, and they're, doesn't quite match up.
Right.
And it does put them some at a disadvantage.
And we have had a good number of students do that in the past.
We do. We do, and could have potentially even more if the calendars were to line up.
Right.
And not just for us, but for every district across the state. I think it'd be a benefit as we look at it.
We're going to look forward to that, Brent.
I hope so. We're keeping our fingers crossed.
Well, we have a motion and a second. I think we've discussed it, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next on the agenda is something that I had spoken with the board about concerning the Holly Ridge annexing the new Southern Elementary School, and I asked you to think about it back in October, when we had a, I think we had a special call meeting that particular day. Tonight, I'm asking that you, since I hope you have had time to run it through your, your mind and think about it, that we give permission as a board to, or direct our staff to have some conversations with Holly Ridge Town Council and the mayor, so that they can reach some agreements about certain questions that our staff may have. So that's the reason for this. So at this time, I'm asking for a motion to, a direct staff to have those conversations with the Holly Ridge Council, so that they can move forward and bring back to us what their recommendation may be.
Make such a motion. I'll second.
All in, any, any discussion?
Madam Chair, it would be customary for our staff to have discussions with actually the town staff of Holly Ridge.
That's what I'm talking about. Well, they, they are, but they're, and Mr. Irwin has talked to the attorney too.
Thank you.
Everything okay, everybody?
Good.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you, staff. We will start working on that right away. I know they don't have anything to do on their plates, but that's something that, that we do need to go ahead and get. Dr. Boris, I'm sorry that you're last, but you're going to be the best, aren't you?
Absolutely.
[laughing].
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Collins. Thank you so much for everything that you do, and certainly I look forward to any time that I'm able to present to you. So again, thank you for this opportunity. What I have for you tonight is our strategic plan update for our schools. Last year, in December, all of our schools submitted a, their two-year plans, and they were approved at your December meeting last year. And so this year is just an update. So this is not an action item tonight, but just an informational item. But what you'll notice, if you, when you look through the, the plans, you'll see where the schools have indicated their 2018-19 progress in their plans. You'll also see that there's some actions that were completed, and those are marked off as completed through the NC Star system, which is a nice feature of that, that you can actually check off those actions as you go along. And then you'll also see, in a lot of cases, there were new actions added to meet the established goals, and to meet some of the requirements of some of the TSI requirements that you'll see, or some of the low-performing requirements that you'll see in a few minutes. There were a few target revisions based on some performance data and some changes in data sources, especially around some of the surveys, moving from the assist surveys to the E-proof surveys. You'll see some of the wording, and those targets changed. But again, the four, the goals for the schools remain the same, and they just tweak based on, the plan based on their data and results and the needs of the school. One of the things that was new last year, and actually has had an additional piece added to it this year, is the TSI, which is Targeted Support and Improvement. And you had, were actually two types of TSI schools. One is AT, which stands for Additional Targeted Support, and then the other is CU, which stands for Consistently Under, Consistently Underperforming. These designations are actually part of the ESA, of the federal requirements and federal law, and these designations are focused specifically on subgroups and looking at gaps within subgroups and any subgroups that may be identified as underperforming. And in Onslow County, we do have 27 schools that are identified as TSI AT and/or TSI CU. And so those schools are required to submit their plans through NC Star, and that's one of the reasons that last year we, we made the move to NC Star, was so we weren't requiring schools to submit two different plans, so we just stick with one planning platform. We did send home required parent notification on November 1st regarding these statuses, and these letters are, when these letters go home, obviously they're required, and they have to use the language that's required within the legislation. But it's often difficult to explain exactly what they mean in a letter. But just to give you an idea, and I included in your packet the TSI AT and the TSI CU information. When we look at TSI AT, schools that were identified there had a subgroup, and in most cases, it was students with disabilities, had a subgroup that was performing lower than, this is how complicated the law, the legislation gets here, but they had a subgroup that was performing lower than the high, than the all-student subgroup for the highest-performing CSI school, which is the lowest 5% of the schools in the state. So you're comparing your students with disabilities or any subgroup with an all-student subgroup, and it's just a weird comparison. But anyway, that's how they're identified, and that is a three-year identification. So our schools will be working on, you know, showing growth within those identified subgroups over the next three years to try to exit that status. The TSI CU, again, comes back to subgroups, and our subgroups of each school also receive letter grades as our schools do. And so if you have a subgroup performance grade within a subgroup that has, that's an F for three years, and actually they identified the first time for two years, then you're considered consistently underperforming with that subgroup. And so, again, this is a, this identification is a year-to-year identification, but to exit, you have to have two years of not having an F in that subgroup. So again, it's going to be, take a couple of years as those schools continue to work for, in progress towards exiting. And so what you'll see in the plans are clear, focused areas on, in most, a lot of cases, students with disabilities. There's a couple of schools that had a couple other subgroups, but all 27 of the schools identified students with disabilities was the area where, where the identification, the common area of identification. The other thing that you'll have, we have four schools identified as low-performing, which is the state accountability model. And with that, again, they're required to submit plans through NC Star. One major difference here is these plans are actually required to be approved by the board. But before they're approved by the board, they have to be submitted as a preliminary plan, allowed time for review, and then be approved by the board. Last year, we kind of had an expedited timeframe because of the storm and everything, so we were, we were able to get all that done at the December meeting. But this year, the four schools are identified in your packet, you have their plans, and so what will happen, again, that letter has already gone home, went home on November 1st. All the plans are actually already posted on the website, and the parents were directed in the letter where, how to access the, the plans if they wanted to review those, to give any feedback. And then we will come back in December, this December board meeting, for these four specific plans and ask for board approval at that time. And then they click a submit button in NC Star, and then the state reviews those plans and provides us with some feedback, and then we can make a determination as to whether or not we take any action on today's feedback. So that's kind of where we are with, with our strategic planning update. Again, no board action tonight is required, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mark, just a question about questions from the, you know, we have the plans to read and study. Any questions be directed to you, not to the school?
Well, I mean, I would prefer that you certainly, if I can answer the question, I would love to do that, but if it's something that we need to get an answer from the principal, I'd be happy to get an answer, or get the, the school in touch, in touch with you to get an answer.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mark.
Absolutely. Thank you.
That's the end of our business tonight, so entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, anyone?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, be safe.